Welcome to the June 12, 2023 Business Meeting of the Milford Board of Education. We have a roll call for attendance, please.
Catherine Ailing.
Here.
Adam DeYoung.
Mr. DeYoung asked to be excused, although he is going to try to get here, but late if he can get, if he can.
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Andrew Fowler.
Mr. Fowler is running a few minutes late.
Tracy Erby.
Ms. Erby asked to be excused for her own high school graduation.
Emily McDonough Souza.
Here.
Gary Pelicetti.
Here.
Eleanor Patrowski.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Ms. Wolf Boynton is not feeling well, so she's excused.
Susan Glennon.
Here.
Six members present.
Okay, and we may have one or two arriving late. Dr. Kutaya, we're going to recognize some retirees.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Glennon and members of the Board of Education. Tonight is a little bit of so long, see you later, and a welcoming of a couple of new people to the team. So we're going to start off with recognizing a few individuals who are retiring. This is something that we're going to try. We are trying to do better at recognizing our retirees. We've tried a little bit of the end-of-year celebration, inviting them, trying to invite them to the Board of Ed. So we'll get feedback from our retirees and see how this works. But most certainly, I want to underscore that it is really important for us to say thank you to our staff members who have provided so much service to our young people and our community. And however we do this and decide to do it moving forward, I think it's an important part of our fabric and our culture of saying thank you to those who have served. So first, I want to say thank you to Gail Urban. Gail? Now, I think I have a hire date on here for you, October 1st, 1976. We're not sure that's actually correct. We may, we think we have you here for 47 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
God bless. Thank you, Gail, for serving as a para-educator, supporting our young people, showing them unconditional care, and helping them along their learning journey. I hear, Gail, that you're not really done with us, that you're hoping to come back as a substitute. And you are more than welcome to join us as we continue forward. So, Gail Urban, thank you so much for your years of service.
Thank you very much.
The next retiree I'd like to recognize is our very own Charlie Phillips. Now, you might have thought 47 years was impressive, but Charlie's been with us for 55 years. Charlie, I have a hire date of June 4th, 1968. Is that about right?
Yes.
God bless you. Charlie has coached our boys' track team at law for 55 years, also taught English for around 35 years, right?
Thirty-five.
And even after retirement, decided to stay with our boys. Charlie, I know that in the classroom, there's so much giving, but when you're out on a team and coaching our young people, there's a different kind of giving. And I have heard so much on how you have supported our young people in believing in themselves way beyond a classroom. So thank you, Charlie, for giving to our community, but most importantly, our high school students. And so thankful for your service.
I think that's all the retirees in that segment of the audience, yes.
So, Chris, I'm sorry that I can't give any double-digit accolades to you for being in Milford, but you have been in the profession for 30 years. And you have given us, I consider ours lucky to have had you for a portion of that for the last three years. My very first pandemic hire, actually, a completely online virtual hire. And so Chris is deciding to move on to other ways to contribute to the profession after serving in public schools in Hampton, Cheshire, Watertown, and Milford after 30 years. So God bless and good luck, Chris.
Thank you.
I'm not supposed to say this person's name in public. I'm not supposed to say anything about his retirement. I'm not supposed to say that he has served us since, for the last 12 years, I have this, Ms. Pazna?
No.
Right? Twelve?
Almost.
Almost, almost 12 years in his role as Chief Operating Officer. And Jim is such a humble guy that he really doesn't want any attention, so nobody look over at him right now. But I am pretty certain that anyone you talk to who have had opportunity to work with or partner with Mr. Ricciutelli, they could share with you something similar as I would share with you in that he has really been a thought partner for me. He is that individual who holds wisdom and knows how to gently and lovingly impart it upon you, even when you're dead wrong, and he wants to say so. When I say that he'll be missed, it's really an understatement that there are so many ways that he supports our school district and our community. It's so much greater than just the job of Chief Operating Officer. So congratulations, Jim. Good luck on your retirement. Those are the retirees that we have in attendance this evening.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to echo Dr. Kutaya's sentiments that the employees of Milford Public Schools, all of them, are really the heart and soul of our organization. And we cannot do our work without, without you, without you all. So we are grateful for your dedication and your years of service to our young people. And we hope that you enjoy, enjoy your well-deserved retirement, and we'd love to have you back. We're always looking for good people to come and substitute, right? So we appreciate your willingness to still share a little bit of yourself with us. And good luck to you as well, Mr. Phillips, and Mr. Brown, and you over there. Thank you for all your dedication.
And I think we'll do as with the students. Retirees, don't feel like you have to stay for the meeting. I'm sure you have some homework to do. But you're welcome to stay if you'd like.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you.
We'll miss you.
So do we have anybody in the audience tonight who would like to make public comment before the board? You raised your hand. All right, seeing that, I'll dispense with the public comment statement then and move on to the Chair's Report. So, Board Members, the end of the school year is upon us, and we have the, we had the Academy graduation earlier this evening, Lauren Foran's graduation are coming up tomorrow and Wednesday. And just a reminder that it's, that we move now into our summer schedule. So we, we will have our next business meeting on July 10th, and then we break for several weeks until August 28th. So no committee of the whole meetings during the summer. But we do have an executive session planned on June 26th, so make sure that's on your calendar. And I did just want to say as well that, you know, our board table will look a little different next year. We're wishing Dr. Fedigan some accolades and good wishes on your, your next endeavor. Thank you so much for your efforts for Milford and your many years of efforts on behalf of Milford Public Schools for our young people. We appreciate it greatly. So good luck to you.
Thank you all.
And with that, we'll move, do we have any liaison reports? Mr. Fowler?
I do. So the Permanent Schools Facilities Building Committee met at Pumpkin Delight School a couple of weeks ago, and we got a tour of the renovation project, and it's coming along, seems to be pretty smoothly. So it looks great so far, and just wanted to pass along my appreciation for Tecton and everyone involved for getting that project and the Pumpkin Delight community for getting that along pretty well.
So refresh my memory. Will the additions, you ready for September?
That's part of the, when you think of it, it's free. Probably not. Okay, definitely not. But yeah, the, the gym is, well, it's just the exterior part.
Okay, I got you. Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Portions of it will be, but not, not entirely.
Okay, great. Any other liaison reports? Okay, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report then. Dr. Kutaya.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. So as I was saying, this is an evening of goodbye, see you at another time in life, and welcome to the team. And you so noted, actually, the board table will look very different with three new cabinet members joining us. So who we have here this evening taking the place of Mr. Brown is our new Director of People Personnel Services, Jennifer Stewart. Jennifer? While Jennifer's first day is only two days away, two, three days, three days away, Thursday, June 15th. Jennifer's already been super engaged in transitioning with Mr. Brown. Jennifer began her career in 2000, working first as a teacher primarily involved in special education, and continued on to progressively more responsible roles throughout her entire career, moving up through the ranks, if you will. During those early years, Ms. Stewart gained valuable experiences, a key figure in developing and implementing individual educational plans in the towns of Stratford, Trumbull, and Westport Public School Districts. She was a key driving force in those districts to really develop a comprehensive system of support for students with special needs. In 2017, Ms. Stewart began her career as administrator in the North Haven Public School System. Beginning as a special education coordinator, Jennifer supervised the middle school, high school, and transition programs there. One year later, she was promoted to the position of Interim Director. And you know what happens when you're in interim. You have the job, particularly in the world of special education. And she became the full-time Director of Student Services, starting her career during a remote environment as well, so similar to Mr. Brown. She was permanently assigned to the Director of Student Services in July 2020. I am so thrilled to have Jennifer already on board. There is a cohesiveness that is already occurring between Mr. Brown and Ms. Stewart. I know that we're going to be in great hands with the vision that she brings to continue services as a continuum for all students, starting at the age of three through the age of 22. So so grateful to have you on board, Jennifer. So while Jennifer's face is new to us, this next cabinet member's face is much more familiar. I am so grateful to have Mr. Brennan already on board as the Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations. Welcome, Mr. Brennan. I will add that his family is with us, and in particular, they get special accolades because it is Jocelyn's birthday today, and attending a board meeting, I think that, that deserves more presents or something. And Jill's like, that's the second time you've said it. Enough already. The Brennan, the Brennan name is no stranger to this community. We are so grateful to have Jill and Sean both in the school system. Jill teaches kindergarten at Meadowside. But this is about Sean for a moment. So Mr. Brennan has served our school community for the last 17 years. And it's been through progressively more responsible roles, starting as a teacher, a department head, a dean of students, an assistant principal, and principal. And he comes to us just more recently as the principal of JFK Elementary School. And that didn't stop though, Sean. He has been studying with great, great effort and almost in the shadow of Mr. Ricciutelli, at times when you wouldn't like, oh, there's Sean, learning feverishly about the role. Sean did go back to school. He returned to Southern Connecticut after receiving a bachelor's for his O92, and then went on to earn his master's in school business leadership, which he just completed at Wilkes University. So know that he has the classroom academic training to do the job, and then, of course, the, the training of the almighty Mr. Ricciutelli. Throughout his career, Mr. Brennan has sharpened his leadership and business management skills, most notably in his role as school principal. He has been instrumental in every part of a public school system, operationally, including budgeting, staff management and development, streamlining processes and procedures within the school setting. In addition, he's been involved with district contract negotiations already, including the greeter secretary contracts, the custodian maintenance contracts. And for the last two years, he's immersed himself, as I've said, in many valuable learning experiences, including getting involved in the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials, as well as participating in intensive workshops offered from the University of New Haven and Georgetown University, all in, on his own time and dime. Some people don't know this, but all throughout the pandemic, I held a very close Administrator Advisory Group. I, I think we affectionately called it the Restart Committee, and we would meet a lot, and we became like a little family. During a crisis, I drew those individuals who I could trust the most throughout that, and Mr. Brennan was a key member of that community, of that committee. So he has been, along with a couple of others, really behind the scenes in how to operate a district in a pandemic. So just in case we're ever faced with that. So it comes with that experience, yes. One of my favorite things that Sean is already demonstrating is that he is 100%. You will always hear him say that. It's one of his favorite phrases. 100% on board. He is 100% part of the team, and is already, he started his role with Mr. Ricciutelli May 1st. Just seems like yesterday is happening so fast. And already transitioning the position with great leadership, authority, and confidence. So I'm certain that you will see those attributes at the board table starting on, in July. Welcome, Mr. Brennan. Ms. Glennon, with your permission, we have another retiree in the room. Can we go back?
Yes, we can.
Okay, he snuck in. Bobby Malita, please stand up. Bobby, thank you. We heard rumor you were attending tonight, so.
All right, cool, cool. I'm trying to sneak on, sneak up on you, but I guess it's a new word.
I wouldn't put that past you either, Bobby. So Bobby has served our school district as a custodian for 27 years. Now, there are a lot of jobs in the system that are not easy, a lot, they're like. But being a custodian for 27 years, and, and everyone should know that it's much more than putting, throwing out garbage and keeping classrooms clean and making sure that spills are cleaned up. Like, every job in our system is about relationships, and that includes our custodians. And people like Bobby, they took the time to connect with our kids and our staff, and they become part of the fabric of this community. So when people like Bobby go, we feel it. When people like Mr. Ricciutelli go, we feel it. And that's what I love about our school system. We're all equally part of this community. So Bobby, you'll be sorely missed, and thank you for your years of service.
I have to start a new career.
We have substitute positions available. Bobby, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for the invite. Thank you.
We don't want to keep you here all night. You're free to stay. Some of the, I have heard, I have heard students talk about some of their favorite people in their schools are, are custodians, and it is absolutely true that, that those relationships are important. So thank you so much.
You have to keep them happy to keep us happy.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yes, we get paid for it.
All right, we'll move on?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kutaya.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to this evening's instructional highlight, which is a focus, once again, as we annually do, on the Strategy Map and Milford Measures. Is this all queued up, Mr. Duke? So this evening, I intend to provide you with an update as to where is our long-term planning at, at this point, and our progress made in the areas of Milford Measures. So let's get started. Bye, Bobby. That almost turned into Bobby's meeting. Okay, this is a slide that you see over and over, but if you're observant, there's a change. And we have always been and will continue to be about three core dimensions of our system, and that is the vision of the learner, the developmental relationships framework, and our model for high-quality instruction. But what our instructional supervisor for equity is focusing on this summer, and I'm hoping to bring to you early fall, is our equity framework. And we are going to be explicit about what does equity mean in Milford Public Schools. And we're going to engage stakeholder groups to help us define what does that mean for all children. And so I stole this graphic from the internet. Please know that. It is not going to be our graphic. I just put it in there as a placeholder because this, this presentation is about our future planning. So I wanted to go ahead and signal to this board and the community that there will be a fourth leg to the stool. And that is to align with actually this board's commitment to the equity work. And our, some of our, your goals, our commitments are based on equity. So we are going to be creating a framework, drafting it out by fall, engaging stakeholders, engaging students and teachers. That work has already started. You heard from Ms. Akampora last month, I think it was, with just a starting presentation of where we're at with things. So as part of our Strategy Map conversation this evening, I want you to know that that's launched and has a placeholder in our future plans, okay? So this is a voila moment. This version of our model for high-quality instruction is affectionately called V2. And we are going to unveil that with teachers in July of HQI Live Season 4. And I'm happy to share that we have the largest number of enrollees to date. We have 127 teachers signed up for HQI Live. And that is quite the accomplishment. That, that should say to all of us that teachers want to come together to improve their practice. I'll go back a slide. The bottom left corner is V1. You'll recognize that. This next slide is the updated V2. How did we get here was from feedback from teachers, teacher leaders, coaches, department heads, assistant principals, principals, supervisors. We came together and made these modifications over the course of the last couple of years. You'll notice the date of this was December 22. We decided not to unveil that throughout the year, but the true unveiling is occurring actually now with some teacher leaders and fully with the district in July. So this will, there are many commonalities, but there are some key changes. So let me go ahead and identify for you that we've moved to a knowledge economy because that, we felt like, wasn't really resonating with our folks. It was really a business-y kind of term, and we replaced that with really focusing on thinking experiences, where the students, the learners are really, that teachers are really focusing, developing thinking experience for learners. Another new concept in this is at the bottom of the football, as we like to call it, and you'll see developing agency through. We weren't clear enough about agency in the last version, but now we're really going to be clear about agency as it's related to goal-setting, reflection, self-assessment, assessing resources, and this concept of knowledge mobility. And how does my learning in this class or in this unit apply to another class or in a different unit? And that has a little bit to do with our career paths. So knowledge mobility will be a newly introduced concept as we move forward, starting in July. We went back and forth on whether we should leave the word engineer in this model. And at the top, you'll see the little circle. And we have gone back and forth between teacher, facilitator, engineer, and we felt like teacher facilitator really didn't capture the entire job of a teacher. So we're going to do a little bit more professional learning capacity building around the concept of what it takes, the planning that it takes to come to a lesson, and letting go to students. And that's where we're really going to focus on the engineer concept of all of the pieces that a teacher has to put together way even before she gets to in front of a group of students. So we retained the term engineer, but retooled it up at the top a little bit, okay? I didn't mean that to be a full instruction mini lesson on V2. We'll get back to you guys on that next year after we ourselves build our own capacity on that with teachers. As a reminder, just want to put up here for visual that we are aligning our strategy map and our measures to the four goals that the board adopted, which are directly aligned with the vision of the learner. Also aligning all of our work to the commitments that you adopted as well in May of '21. And the next couple of slides you've seen before, but I just want to underscore that the Strategy Map lives right there where the red arrow is. There are commitments and there are goals. And we have to make, put into action or enact a plan to operationalize the commitments so that they result in goals. I'm also going to remind the board. I'm also going to remind the board that improvement is not linear, anywhere in life, I don't think. A plus B plus C is how traditionally in education we have approached improvement. If you just do this and you set this goal to get to 78%, then a little bit of magic happens and you hit goals. And we know that doesn't really happen. That improvement is a couple of steps forward, a couple of steps back, learning, but a trajectory that is upward. In fact, I know we had a conversation about this improvement cycle. Ms. Petrowski, I think you and I engaged in some conversation about this visual last time. And that this really demonstrates improvement in school districts, that we're going to put a plan in place, we're going to enact it, we're going to collect some data, we're going to study how it's going, and we give ourselves permission to change the plan. That the plan, under old strategic planning models, you bring huge stakeholders together, you develop a plan that lasts for five years, usually collects dust and is already out of date by the time you adopt it. We give ourselves permissions to, we give ourselves permission to work in cycles and to change the plan as we go along. And I have some feedback for us this evening. And then I also showed you this diagram last year, in that there are inputs, there are intended processes and outcomes that we walk into the plan with. We start implementing it, and sometimes out of what I would say left field, but this seems to be right field on this chart, there are some emerging processes and outcomes, some things that we weren't expecting, that causes us to revisit the plan as well. On this next slide, I want to share with you a couple of considerations based on some of the work I've been doing at the superintendent network. I'm grateful that this board allows me to engage in professional learning. I'm part of a superintendent network that meets once a month with 25 other superintendents. And we've been talking about some of these things as it relates to improvement science. And I would just share that with you tonight, because it was on my mind as I was going through our strategy map and our Milford Measures. And they can enter into our conversation this evening however we want. But I want to share with you that through those conversations with superintendents, it was underscored that we are raising young people, not just simply transmitting knowledge. And if we're just transmitting knowledge, then linear goals make sense. I'm going to give you this, you're going to do this, and this is what we're going to get out of it. But it's much more complex than that learning, that we're dealing with young people, and we've talked about it ad nauseam of what young people are dealing with today. Just take a look what's been happening in our middle schools, right? You have to consider that environment within which academics are occurring. So let's remember, we're raising young people. Two, care and relationships are the foundation for everything else. We've been really good about that in Milford for a long time. I've just been explicit about it through the developmental relationships framework. Milford has always been known to be part of relationships. Relationships have to be part of our plan. And oftentimes, strategic plans don't include relationships, but ours does. Tasks should be grounded in purpose and meaning, and we're really trying to get to the heart of tasks. We just called it a thinking experience. I want you to know that part of our future plan, the strategy mapping plan, is to get to the heart of what are we putting in front of kids to do? And is it rigorous and is it engaging? That's part of our strategy planning for the next few years. That's part of helping and supporting engineers, our teachers, to craft learning experiences that help kids, it's kind of trendy right now to use the phrase, to think deeply. That's in a lot of literature right now. Are kids thinking deeply? Are kids doing the thinking? Another thing I'd ask you to consider is that we should think in terms of wholes and not parts, connections and not silos. That's really hard to do when our high schools are primarily based on historical structures of high schools. That a high schooler's scheduling actually hasn't changed in decades. And some of the work that we're doing in developing units and curriculum really speak to how does this learning come together and make connections, as opposed to learning in silos? That's going to be part of our work over the next few years in our strategy mapping. Another consideration I want us to think about is that there is no one-size-fits-all solution. And as a system, sometimes that's hard not to fall prey to, because you want to make a decision and it has to impact eight elementary schools. And sometimes, schools just need something a little different. Different approaches make sense for different contexts, giving ourselves permission to provide different supports where needed. And finally, we have to be super cognizant that inequity is baked into many of our assumptions and structures. And that's going to be part of our work moving forward as a board and administration, as a team, knowing that there's inequity in the structures and systems, and likely without intention. And we will need to uncover and disrupt and reform those mindsets and structures when we get to them. Those will be decision points for us. And that's looking way ahead, right? And I know you're going to have questions about that, but I'm not going to have answers right away tonight, okay?
I could already tell, Gary, you're thinking, you're thinking. It's coming, I could already tell. Okay, but I welcome the conversation. So let's get started with, I did some screenshots of the strategy mapping that I'm working on. There are, right now, five different components to the strategy map, and I'm going to stay on this one for a moment. The first component is district continuous improvement. There are four key pieces to what I like to call will provide coherence across the system. When I was first hired, I was asked to bring coherence and build capacity in the system. It will take us a long time, and we're still working on it, but I want you to know, we're still working on it. These four pieces will help us bring coherence and capacity throughout 14 buildings, 491 classrooms, about 600 teachers, and 5,400 students. Remember the scope of the work, okay? So this is the first time I'm showing a little bit of where we want to bring some analytics. So what we're going to start doing this summer is building analytics around leading and lagging indicators. And I'm toying around with this chart here that you see under each column that reads leading and lagging. Now, a KPI is a key performance indicator. It's a very business-y term. But I believe that we have an opportunity in Milford to identify in each one of these coming components, each one of these focus areas, some key performance indicators. Leading indicator, and I'll just do a little mini lesson quick for new board members, a leading indicator is measuring the inputs, the professional learning we're providing, the curriculum map we wrote, the time teachers are spending in one another's classrooms, the investments we're making in likely the system or the adults. And the lagging indicator are what we are very accustomed to consuming as like SBA scores and SAT and graduation rates, et cetera. So based on each area of focus in the strategy map, we're going to identify leading and lagging indicators and some KPIs. What are the indicators we really want to look for in each focus area? Now, this gets into a little bit, these next coming slides, a little bit of some of the things we're going to try to tackle. So let's move to curriculum programming and instruction. So we have a healthy, robust curriculum cycle in place. It's well underway, we're writing curriculum, and it's being implemented. So we're in this state phase of it's being, data has been pulled, we've analyzed its impact, we're writing curriculum and we're implementing. Well, the last two of the seven-year cycle in curriculum is to ask ourselves, so how's it going? And we're at the point of asking, how's it going in some curricular areas? So we want to build some key performance indicators. How do we measure the impact of newly developed, newly written, by the way, by Milford Teachers' curriculum? Those are the answers we're trying to get to. I'll go through some of the other items in the list. We want to expand our career paths. Some of these things are not new, would not be surprising to you, we talked a lot about that. We want to develop and expand our CTE industry-aligned courses. We want kids to walk out of our schools with certificates in hand to be able to go straight into the work world and start earning money right away. We want to expand internship opportunities. We have record numbers of students participating in internships this summer at both high schools. We are hoping to be able to expand the number of weeks in internships and expand the number of individuals going out on internships to different places, everywhere from an engineering office, a lawyer's office, to a construction site. We want to establish college career advisory, starting in sixth grade, you've heard me talk about this. Let's not wait till junior year to ask, what do you want to do when you grow up? Revised credit recovery opportunities, we're in dire need to do this, particularly post-pandemic. In the area of curriculum programming, we want to evaluate and revision school counseling and student support services. With all that's happening in the area of mental health for young people, we need to get to understanding, so is our counseling, are the counseling services working and where do they need revision? It's just a question. If there is need for revision, let's do it, because our kids' needs today may be a little different than they always have been. Infusing more voice and choice for students, you've heard me talk about that, and implementing, evaluating intentional play and executive functioning. So we have a nice launch in that area, but just to say we did it is not a good enough measure. We've got to see what's the impact on student learning. So we need to build in an assessment piece to understand what's the impact of those new pieces. Moving over to instruction, rolling out V2. We have a huge lift in front of us, and we still have to wait from the state to understand where our reading program is going to be over the next couple of years. But we are implementing a balanced literacy program in elementary and middle, but we're continuously revising that. We're looking at the coaches' roles, we're looking at our multi-tiered system of report, or previously known as SAT. We need to evaluate and modify school schedules. We started with middle school, I think elementary is right behind it, we'll probably start that work next year. And then there's a question, is the current high school schedule the right schedule for our young people, considering all the curriculum we're writing and all the career path work that we are going to be investing in? And, sorry, should that should read implementing intentional play and executive functioning, sorry about that. The use of format assessments is going to be big, not as a report out, but as a learning and planning tool, and then revisioning the school counseling department. So if you were to look at this on the strategy map, I would say go back to that slide previous, and you'll start, and you will see the columns, leading indicators and lagging indicators, and this summer into fall, winter, we're going to start identifying KPIs for each. How do we know this is working and having impact on student learning? I just did a cut and paste so that we wouldn't be looking at small font across continuum. In the area of assessment, this is an area that we probably have the greatest work to do, with intention. Oftentimes, when you go into developing a multi-year plan and looking at improving and building coherence, you often go straight to the assessments, the indicators. You're used to that in education. Bring somebody in, identify the targets, and then develop the plan to get there. To me, that is not the, that's kind of the tail wagging the dog. Let's build a system that is right for students, and then let's build a system to provide us feedback, to let us know how we're doing. So we had that work to lift. Now that we have so many pieces of improvement in place, we have a plan that we need to create to know, to give us feedback on how's it going. We also need to build a capacity on data analysis, developing protocols and processes. We have a data management system, thank goodness, knock on wood, that is finally working for us and provides us the data we need in an easy way to access. We're developing alternate forms of Milford Measures, and I'm going to have to share with a couple of those with you this evening. And we're also in the process of developing mastery-based experiences for all our learners, K through 12. I'm sorry that the top of power management was cut off. We're looking at personnel services, providing personnel services by working group, from onboarding to retirement, and we've talked about the continuum of talent management. We're looking at increasing the number of teachers of color that we hire. We want to be intentional about that. We need to develop staffing models by level, and that's going to require us to take a look at population of schools, number of teachers, number of support personnel around kids, and we just need to make it consistent across the system. We are going to be forced to revise our TDAO system again as the new legislation's coming out and guidance from the state will be coming out. That work will occur this year to take place starting July 1st of '24. And Ms. Capazza already does some of this, but we'd like to increase developing a feedback protocol. So as individuals join our system and as they leave our system, can we have feedback on what was your experience onboarding, years of experience, supports, retirement pieces? So those are the key components, five key areas as of right now, we continue to develop some. What you don't see on here is operations. Hopefully, onboarding Mr. Brennan will help us understand how can we measure the impact effectiveness of our operations side of the organization? So how are technology services, with Mr. Giancolas' lens on that? We've talked a lot about providing food and meal support to our young people and families. We want to know how that's going, et cetera. So there's an operational side of the organization that also needs to be part of the map and also needs to be measured as to level of impact. So you heard us talk a little bit about Milford Measures, and I did again a screenshot of a couple of pieces of the measures. So let me tell you what Milford Measures is right now. It continues to grow. And when I first met with our consultant from the Rennie Center out of Harvard who works through the Connecticut, no, wrong name, Partners for Educational Leadership, they changed their name. He asked, so at the end of the day, what do you want, Dr. Vitale? And I said, well, I want some kapow measures, to be professional about it. Meaning, I want some big pieces, big pieces of feedback that a number can't give me. So if it says 3.4 on average out of a scale of five, people are satisfied with the support they're getting through feedback from teacher to teacher. Well, I want to dig into that, like what does that really mean? So we started developing some survey questions for teachers and students around the key pieces that are important to us, HQI, relationships, the sense of belonging, the vision for the vision of a learner. So last year, we piloted the survey. I provided you on this slide some sample questions that we asked teachers on HQI efficacy, particularly in cultivating student thinking experiences. So if you take the model for HQI, we are asking teachers, how do they feel about implementing key components of the model? In this area, we're asking, we've asked them these questions this spring and got their feedback on, let's say, for example, how confident are you answering a question with a question? Because that's one of our strategies, that you're not always answering a student's question with an answer, because that can tend to be overscale holding. Another section, a couple of sections here of the Milford Measure survey that we just gave this spring, is professional feedback from other teachers. We really want to build an environment where teachers are giving one another feedback to build their craft. It doesn't have to come from an administrator. In fact, oftentimes, it's more effective when teachers are working with teachers to build each other up. So we ask them questions about that. We also ask them questions about culture of learning among teachers. So how's it going in this school? To what degree do you feel supported to continue to improve instructional practice? So we were able to give this survey to all teachers this spring. It is so fresh and new that we have not had any opportunity to dig into the numbers, it was just given at the end of May. What was also given at the end of May is a survey to students. And on the next slide, you'll see us ask students some similar questions. So you see some questions about student thinking experiences, feedback from teachers, and the sense of agency. So we're asking kids, starting in grade five, how is it going? Do you set goals for yourself? How much of the feedback you get from teachers encourage you to keep going and working through a problem? And then we also ask them some questions on developmental relationships framework. We believe we have expressed care down pat. We do a really good job in that element of the. We believe we have expressed care down pat. We do a really good job in that element of the developmental relationships framework. So we focus our questions this year on challenging growth, sharing power, and expanding possibilities. And finally, the key, the last part of Milford measures I want to share with you this evening is that we were able to bring our consultant actually from the Rennie Center in for two days. He was here Thursday and Friday last week, so this is really hot off the presses, okay? And I wish I had his job for two days because he got to talk to kids all day long in grades kindergarten, first, third, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, and recent graduates, class of 22. We asked him to come back and we asked them these questions. I won't read those to you. And of course, as they were answering, he was adding questions to expand. I don't have the transcript to that yet. I just have two pages of golden nuggets, he called it. So I'm just going to share a couple of our kiddos quotes and end the presentation on that, and then I'm happy to take questions. So our, Mr. Volker, Andrew Volker is our consultant's name. He got a chance to talk to some first graders at one of our elementary schools. And the first grader was telling him about how his teacher gives him work that's challenging. And he said, Andrew asked, so you said that your teacher said the work is challenging? And the young student says, no, 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 she never says it's challenging or not. We have to figure it out. But that tells me that if we're going to relate the interview to H Q I, that even first graders are being given thinking experiences that require deep thinking out of the mouth of our first grader. A quote from a fifth grader, some work, and this is true transcripts, so if I say the word liked a lot, it's a kiddo saying it. Some work is like partner work. So we have to like talk in groups and some things are independent, but still we have to talk to each other if we need help. So I think we talk to each other more sometimes than we talk to the teacher. Now that's part of our model for H Q I, that we want students providing each other feedback and pushing on each other's learning. This interview, we didn't ask the students, do you get feedback from kids? But the way we ask these questions and how Andrew probes, we're getting data from kiddos saying H Q I is happening. Seventh grader, my favorite class this year is probably humanities slash social studies. I think it was my favorite because I had the freedom to learn what I wanted. Not what I wanted, but like I had more freedom with what I wanted to learn about and what topic I really wanted to research. So Andrew follows up, well, what did you choose? Climate change, of course. So here are a couple of quotes from graduates. And I think it's more like, what is your favorite course and how did it prepare you for where you are now for real life? So here are some of the questions, answers. More powerful learning was in AP stats. I think it made it, and I think what made it different for me, it's like comparing it to other classes. What I thought the way I was taught was very different. It was very applicable to the real world. Like in a real world setting, there was just a lot of hands-on activities compared to the other classes I've had. Like for a lot of them, in this class, we used actual data. Another law graduate said AP Chem really made a difference for me. It wasn't just straight lecture. We had quizzes and tests, sure, she would give it to us. And she didn't really give us a study guide, but she gave us a little practice so that we knew what we were strong in and what we needed help with. That's part of our model for H Q I. Another graduate, and then you know, going into those STEM classes, like taking AP stats, well, that was a lot of hard concepts. But the volume of work wasn't that much, which allowed us to really dive into the concepts in a deeper manner that made me understand it better. We've been saying that for a long time in education. It's not breadth, it's depth. Another student talked about how flexibility that teachers extended to her was what made a difference for her in high school. And then lastly, another teacher encouraged a student to just try it. And if you need to stop, then stop, but keep on pushing and just do the best I can. That's what I remember from my teacher. So those are some things that SBA scores don't measure, but they tell us about what the learning experience is for young people in our classrooms. So that's where we are to date with strategy mapping and Milford measures. I know that's a lot, so happy to take questions. Questions for board members? Mr. Hellteddy?
That's a lot. It really is. I mean, I see everything from Bloom's Tax on me to the Japanese factory method in here. I mean, it's a mammoth undertaking, right? You would agree with that?
Yes, sir. Called, you know, leadership of a school district, yeah.
Right, but I mean.
Challenge.
Over what period of time? I mean, we're.
We're in it for the long run. We're raising young people, right? Going back to that. Change, particularly when it involves humans, takes time.
I do have a couple of concerns with peer support. And I think you walk a very fine line with peer support, that that could turn into evaluation, and I hope that that would not happen.
Oh, you mean teachers?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. It's all, it's all willing. No one's saying, Gary, I will visit you. We're really building that from the ground up very organically and we're giving teachers choice around that. So we're inviting them to the table instead of forcing them.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Too many.
Too many. Could you go back to the talent management piece, develop staffing models by level? Just expand on that a little bit. Yeah, so I think a great example of that is the coaches, right? So that we could be explicit and clear that each elementary school gets four coaches. That what they do, how they're assigned, we have the same thing over at the middle school. Who are the people outside the system? We also need to be clear that each elementary school gets school counselor, psychologist, social worker. So staffing models that are written somewhere that each elementary school, this is how it is stacked. That could start to change after our facility study and depending on what decisions we make with the status of facilities. And if you do something in the future, like when we were considering closing a middle school, we were saying, all right, we're going to have 600 kids. So how do you support 600 kids? Do you still just have one school psych, one social worker or? So the staffing model based on enrollment and needs of kids would be responsive and put in writing so that we can be consistent with how we staff. Good, thank you. Other questions? I have a question. Ms. Petrowski?
So in the, in the same area of talent management, increasing the recruitment of teachers of color, I know that's an intentional goal. I'm assuming that this is also going to be on our R A S J, integrated with that, correct? And are there specific plans that we have at the moment that we think will be more effective than what we've done in the past?
So I think through the budget process, we talked that we as a system have to be better prepared for that. And I think what Ms. Akampora's work on building capacity of adults in the system is the first step, so that plan's already underway. Ms. Kapazna has been working with an organization that helps identify individuals that put them in the pipeline intentionally. We're going to, we're going to expand our scope and look for other partners. In fact, there are places where we can identify individuals who already work in the system in a different role than teacher, provide them with incentives and support, and actually grow our own. So I know that Ms. Kapazna's, it's on her radar, it's part of our planning for the future. We just need to find the right partner for that. And we as a system have to be better ready to support individuals of color to come to us.
I've seen that, I just read an article recently about that, how school districts are looking within their own ranks as to how they can grow their own employees that might make a good teacher and go through that training. So I think that has a lot of potential.
Yeah, that's, it's just, it's just such a big challenge to, you know, I mean, it's somewhat integrated in with the challenge we have that biases are just built, are just systemic, right? So there are some, this is maybe a piece of that? Would you consider that a piece of systemic bias is built in?
That is a strong possibility, but I don't, I lack the data to make that statement conclusive, so I'd hate to go out on a limb and do that just yet. Other questions? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. We talked about this a little bit before evaluating and modifying school schedules. Can you give us an update on where the middle school is? Because I know there was a change that occurred, I believe, recently or in.
Yeah, so we're in V two and we're going to hang into V two. We are building other voice and choice opportunities for kids. We've started in two departments now. We're going to be expanding that. So I'm hoping that the schedule we have in place will sustain that. What, it's interesting, through difficulty, what opportunities come about. So we actually did the work of what it would take to close a middle school through the budget crisis. We did that very heavy lifting. We had multiple meetings. We talked about how to fit kids into two buildings, which we would fit them in. But we would have to go to a junior high schedule if we had to go to two buildings. What that started for us actually was, and we haven't stopped it and we commit to talking about it over the summer still, is do we need a junior high schedule is the question on the table. It like, it kind of has piqued administrators' interest. So we want to do the homework on that, on the pros and cons. I'm not saying in public that we're committing to a new schedule, but we're looking into it. We're going to discuss that. At the elementary level, I think we have a problem that we have, it's been an age-old problem, but there is a gross underutilization of staff in the middle of the day because our facilities have multipurpose rooms and cafeterias in the same space. And that space is used as a gym. So P E can't be scheduled for anytime you're serving food. And so specials stop in the middle of the day. And you're under utilizing FTEs. And you're going way beyond contracted obligation of planning time. So unless we're going to build gyms onto our eight elementary schools, which I'm happy to talk to you about, by the way, or some type of multipurpose space that we could use all day long without stopping to serve lunch, I think we need to take a look at our elementary schedule. That also will likely be hand in hand with what I have been hoping to put in place, and that's enrichment for all of the elementary. So that's a little preview of what I'll likely come and talk to you about in two years.
Can you just clarify for me what you mean by a junior high schedule and what that means in comparison to what it is currently?
So right now, kids travel throughout their day mostly with same grade level peers. Junior high mixes them up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please name none. Thank you very much. To be continued. Thank you.
Are they policies next?
Cintilating competition about policies. All right. So thank you to everybody for doing double homework and going back in and rereading. We did as well. And I give ourselves permission to find more mistakes tonight, okay? So let's get started with 5114 suspension expulsion. I'm going to walk you guys page by page, okay? So the blue font is where we made changes for this evening, okay? At the board's request, we've removed personal pronouns or singular pronouns and went to plural pronouns. So you'll see that in the first paragraph of one, no changes on two. You'll see a change from board to district on three. We think we caught all of those, but feel free to jump, bring some more to our attention. No changes on four, no changes on five. Six and B two and three, we moved to the plural pronouns there. No change on seven, and then we get to eight where we talked about changing that word to unlawful. That was incorrect. No change on nine. Same change on 10, double I is unlawful. On 11, we actually have to make a change to the blue. So if you could go to E 1A, we are going to change that to conduct leading to a violation of any federal state law, if the conduct is determined to pose a danger to themselves. And the same changes being made to E 1B. Second to last line, strike the student himself, herself, there to themselves, okay? On 11, more changes to plural pronouns. On 12, change from board to administration as well as a board to district. On 13, you'll see plural pronoun change. And I think on H one, last paragraph, that I is blue, but I can't tell in this slide right now. Paragraph I, I think. Is that blue?
Good.
On which page? Page 13, H one, last paragraph, in an emergency. It's not paragraph G, it's paragraph I.
Oh, right, okay, yes, that is blue.
On page 14, change of some plural pronouns again. And then we are striking I one. And it will be renumbered as soon as we accept the changes, so two will actually become one, okay? Page 15, the word administration instead of board and plural pronoun. Number three has been struck. I'm going to get through all the changes and talk about three on this page, Ms. Glennon, okay? Page 16, similar changes, plural pronouns, district, board, administration. Page 17, similar changes, all to administration instead of board. Let's pause on page 18 for a moment. You'll see some changes, administration, board, from board. On paragraph eight, we are choosing to change again, strike the word administration, and we're going to say the superintendent or his or her designee in that case, okay? And on number three, at the bottom, J three, we struck out too much. The notice of an expulsion hearing shall be bring back to life, given at least five business days before such hearing to the student and their parent. So the strike needs to come back on strike, okay? Page 19, more plural pronoun. Page 20, again, changes to district and plural pronouns there. Page 21, at the administration's discretion at the top. On page 22, I need you to make a change on M two. One, two, three, four, fourth line, conditions required by the district. Instead of board. Page 22, change from board to district. Page 23, more changes with words like superintendent, administration, and plural pronoun. And then on page 24, change from board to district again. So, and then on page 35, nothing. I think we caught all the when board should be district and all the plural pronouns. I want to go to page 15 at the request of a question that came from the board. So this, this school district has historically not engaged the board in expulsion hearings. That's allowable, but historically, that's not how Milford rolls. So what does happen in Milford is a independent hearing officer is hired. And that individual hears the expulsion or hears a stipulated agreement. And so it's a superintendent and or her designee that identifies the administrator that will handle expulsions in the system. Expulsion requests, recommendations come from the building administrator. So we'll receive a letter saying we recommend expulsion. And then that's handled at district level from that point on. Oftentimes, we try to settle with a stipulated agreement. And then that doesn't require as, as much engagement with attorneys. And then that stipulated agreement is presented to the hearing officer and he considers it and most of the time accepts it. If there isn't a stipulated agreement that can come to terms between the parents and the administration, then there's a full hearing. Where they bring attorney, we bring an attorney, we have witnesses, they have witnesses, there's evidence. And it's just like a court of law. We make our cases. And the hearing officer then will rule on what happens with the expulsion. So three does not apply. Not sure why it was there to start with, maybe it was our error, I'm sorry. But that's how we usually conduct expulsions here in Milford. And it works for us. Are there any other questions on 5114? Any questions?
Do you have the motion?
I actually.
Do you have a question?
I do have one question, it's on that page. When you make the change for on page 18 in section eight, lead to the superintendent or could you also do their designee just so we're consistent?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Yes. Do you have the motion?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy 5114, suspension and expulsion due process as presented by the administration.
One second.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board. We'll go to 5144. So we made changes on both of these pages with district, board, et cetera. But there's one that stands out that, quite honestly, just depends what minute you're going to ask me on how I rule on it. So Ms. Griffin and I went back and forth on this one. But the last paragraph, I'm going to have everyone read that sentence quietly to yourselves for a minute.
The last paragraph on page one?
Last paragraph, page one, last sentence. So there's some that may say that should be board and some that may say that should be district. I, my recommendation is remain it as a district because we are engaging now closer to an operational piece. And so the district is asking individual administrators, teachers to consider other factors and the whole context before issuing discipline. So I feel like that's a district role. But again, you can convince me to keep it as board.
So in the second set- sentence, so we could just talk about the, this philosophically perhaps is what we have to do. The second sec- sentence speaks to the board's view.
Yeah.
So we just read the whole thing together.
Okay.
So I think that's why I'm, you know, it is also the, that's why I, I see board as fitting there. It is also the board's desire that staff members impose, as well as the board's viewing, the desire to see progressive discipline. The board also desires that staff members impose such penalty, imposing such penalty take into account all the other relevant factors in determining the appropriate penalty. Because it's the board's, it is our, it is a technically a board policy. That's why I see the board as being a more appropriate word. But I could be overruled. Ms. Petrowski?
So I, I think, I think it could almost go either way.
Well, let me ask this question. Should they both be the same? Should they be the same?
I think so.
If you take out also, you could say the district. But if you have also in there, I agree, it should be the board. And, and the, the rest of the entire piece of progressive discipline does talk about the board's view all the way through. So I'm inclined to say board, but if you, if, I could be convinced of district if you take out also. How's that?
So you guys are suffering from what I just went through.
You're trying to say board in the bot in the last one?
Yeah.
Board?
I agree, I think it should be consistent, those two sentences, so I'd like board.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm leaving.
Yes, Ms. Doyle.
I'm laughing because, of course, that can be difficult. I agree that it should be the same, if it's going to be the same. It could be the district because I do think it is more operational than it is board policy in that if it was district, the whole sentence needs a change. And the district will implement the board's policy by ensuring that staff members impose seeing such penalties. Then we can get both of them in there. The administration, but I think it's just easier just leaving it as board.
I like that on my side of the fence.
But I do think it is more operational than it is necessarily district, the board policy.
So would it be to say something like, the district will? Let's assume it is board. Cinder is board.
Thank you.
All righty, yep, consistent. Yes, beautiful. I don't think it's worth splitting that here, right? Okay, so both will be board. Both will be board. And that's all the changes for that one. Yes, please.
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy 5144, discipline as presented by the administration.
One second.
Second by Mr. Fowler. Any further question on this? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
There are no additional changes to 6120.
Ms. Petrowski?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy 6120, learning as presented by the administration.
Second. Second question, Mr. Fowler, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
6146.11. The only change is at the top of two. We were specific Connecticut State Department of Ed. So 6146.2, changing to .11.
Ms. Petrowski?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy 6146.11, weighted grades as presented by the administration.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Policy 6172, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. Second to last paragraph, that starts a list of alternative programming. I'd like to strike that paragraph and replace it with, alternative education programming will be developed by the district and evaluated annually by the superintendent. And it gets rid of the whole who approves what and where.
Where was this again, please?
Where the blue is.
Oh, page, um, page one or two, okay.
Sorry.
Very good, thank you.
Strike a list of, right?
Right.
And replace it with, alternative education programming will be developed by the district and evaluated annually by the superintendent.
Do we have a problem with that? Okay. Can we have a motion, Petrowski?
Make a motion that the board, Milford Board of Education approves board policy 6172, alternative education programs as presented by the administration.
One second.
Is there any, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
6172.6. Two changes on page two. District may, change from principal to superintendent. And then two items we didn't catch on, one on this page, credit from an online or remote course, that should really be remote slash online to be consistent with the rest of the policy. And then on page one, in the red paragraph, first line, the word courses is duplicate. So we'll just get rid of one.
Where was that, Dr. Petrowski?
Page one?
Page one.
Page one.
Oh, thank you.
Red paragraph, first line. You see it, Ms. Glennon?
Yes.
Okay, great. Those are all the changes for, oh, we added a reference on page four, excuse me, to 6151 on student success plans.
Make a motion, Ms. Petrowski?
Make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves board policy 6172.6, remote online learning as presented by the administration.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Glennon, I'd like to move into the part of the superintendent's report that rescinds a policy.
Yes.
I request that you read, first read and approve tonight so that we can be cleaner about our hiring practices. This is a policy I'm sure everyone will be happy to rescind, and that is the requirement for COVID-19 vaccination for hire, for employment. I don't know if I need to say any more than that, but.
Make a motion, Ms. Petrowski?
I'd like to make a motion that the Milford Board of Education rescinds board policy 4118.239 slash 4218.239, required COVID-19 vaccinations.
One second.
Mr. Fowler, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, congratulations, that was a lot of policy work, heavy lifting. So I'm happy to turn things over, Ms. Rittitelli.
Thank you, Dr. Petrowski. Mrs. Glennon, members of the board. The item on the agenda for the capital improvement plan, you'll know that things are a little, you'll notice that things are a little bit different this year. Normally, we come to you in May. But because of what we were, what we were dealing with, with budget and waiting for decisions from the Board of Alderman, we really couldn't make decisions on the capital improvement plan until at least that phase was resolved. And now, now that your board has authorized a, a, a facility's utilization study, capacity and utilization study, that further impacts what we're presenting you, to you tonight for the capital improvement plan. Just a couple of things that I, that I always say upfront is that it's important to remember that the capital improvement plan is a planning tool. It's not a capital improvement budget. There's, even though there's dollar amounts that are attached here, there is no money that's approved for any of the projects except in the, in the gray section that's at the top of this, this document. And I'll explain that in a second. But what happens is, this is a planning tool. It identifies the needs of the district as we see them over the next five years. Excuse me. And then once your board approves it, it goes to the mayor. And we request that the mayor include that in the city's overall capital improvement plan, which he then presents to the Planning and Zoning Board. From the Planning and Zoning Board, it goes to the Board of Finance. From the Board of Finance to the Board of Alderman. And once the capital improvement plan is approved, then there's still, there's still no dollars attached to it until the mayor recommends to the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman what projects the city can afford and which projects the city prioritizes to move forward. So that's kind of the, that's the process. And I always say, emphasize that the dollar amounts that are here are estimates only. They, we have not engaged the services of an architect or an engineer or anything like that. These are the best estimates that we have based upon our experience in the past and based upon some, some consultation that we have with architects and of course, our facilities director, Pat Bradbury. So with that, I'll, I'll get into the particulars of what we're presenting to you tonight for your consideration. The, the first section at the top that's shaded in gray, we decided to include that. Normally, we don't. Normally, we just start with the first year, which would be 23, 24. But we included what we requested last year, what was funded by the city and what projects kind of are going to change in our recommendations in the rest of the capital improvement plan. So you'll notice there, there are ongoing projects, which are the HVAC ventilation boilers and masonry upgrades, the playgrounds and playing fields repairs. And then a new one that's going to be ongoing and phased in over years is the installation of air conditioning in the buildings. So those are kind of the ongoing projects. But last year, we presented to you and the board decided to include in the capital improvement plan several educationally-based programs that would support, or educationally-based projects that will support the programs that your board and administration prioritizes for moving forward into the, into the future. And those are technical education facility improvements at the high schools and the middle schools, as well as the, a new child learning center at Jonathan Law, which would match the one that's at Ford High School. And also new culinary space at the two high schools. Right now, there is culinary programs, but they would be greatly enhanced to almost a commercial kitchen and almost a restaurant. So it's real-life experience that the students would be having in that particular career pathway. So we introduced those to you last year and the board saw a fit to move those into the capital improvement plan. Also, in the plan last year, you'll notice was the Harborside Middle School project, which in, in that particular year, we were just asking for the architectural and engineering fees to take it to the next level. But that's, that is about a 29 to 30 million dollar project. That project, the project at Cap Pen Meadow and the project at Live Oaks, were now, now that your board has approved the facilities and utilization study that we're going to be undertaking very shortly, we decided to take those out of the capital improvement plan and kind of, and, and put them at the bottom in the shaded area. So they're not going away, but what, what happens with the utilization study and then ultimately what the board and the community decides in the future will inform whether or not any of those, any or all of those projects are still required or they may have to be, depending on what happens, may have to be shifted to other areas. So, so that was our thinking. Show the historical, what we've been funded for and what we're working on now. Propose to you the changes in the capital improvement plan as, as we see the needs today. And then still keep those major projects on the capital improvement plan, but kind of, I don't want to say in limbo, but pending the results of. but pending the results of future study and future decisions that'll be made. So, um, the plan itself has changed a little bit. And so we'll go to the twenty three and twenty four year. Last year, we, we said we would have two phases of, uh, technical education facility improvements. And now that we've been looking into that, we've been talking to some design professionals about what that might be. We've now decided that the changes that we want to make really are going to be two phases at the high school and then a third phase at the, at the middle schools. So you s- you can see in twenty three, twenty four, we were asking for, um, the money for a phase two, which would be coupled with those dollars that are already approved in phase one, and those monies would be dedicated for the tech ed improvements at the, the two high schools. Then in the, um, in the twenty four, twenty five year is when we would request a third phase of funding, and that, that third phase of funding would be specific to the middle schools. The culinary program, um, again, looking at the needs at Foreign Law and the Academy. The Academy has a, a very small space, uh, but it does need to be upgraded, um, with new equipment. It's, it's really the, the equipment that was put in there when the Academy was redone about a decade ago or even more at, at this point. So, um, we would propose, um, in the twenty three, twenty four year, um, culinary improvements at the high schools, and then in the twenty five, twenty six year culinary program, facilities and equipments at the middle schools. And that'll look much different than the high schools. It's, we don't anticipate, uh, full commercial kitchens or a restaurant type setting. But we do want to start, and, and I ask, please, Dr. Pataja, to jump in, um, on the, um, programming side of it. We, we want to bring that culinary experience down into the middle schools and start the pathway, uh, going i- in the middle schools. So, um, so that's where that is. We are, we are still requesting the, the funds for the Jonathan Law Child Learning Center program. That's a, that's an excellent experience that the students at Foreign have. The students at Law have, um, a childcare, um, experience, but it doesn't have the facility that Foreign does. So they're not getting the full experience that the students at Foreign does, and for, um, for equity reasons, we, we really think that, that's, that's in the best interest of the district to go forward. And then we're still, uh, we still have a need for storage space. The Eels Hill, um, Storage Building has been on the capital improvement plan for well over a decade. Uh, but it really, um, it really came to light during COVID and still is because we still have, um, many trailers that were storing a lot of the furniture that we had to purchase because of COVID, a lot of the protective gear and the, and the personal protective equipment and things like that, that we now are storing in trailers. We really do believe that we need a dedicated facility and will not only help with eliminating storage space in trailers, but it, it will be, it will become much more efficient in the long run because we will have a true inventory management system. Um, and that's something that without warehouse space, we just lack the ability to do. So we see efficiencies with that in the future, but we, we need it at some point. So that's on the capital improvement plan for twenty three, twenty four. I, I highlighted the major ones. Um, in the rest of the, the capital improvement plan, we've just sifted in those, um, ongoing projects, the HVAC improvements, the air conditioning installation, the playground improvements. Those really need to be done each year. And then in, uh, later on in the twenty six, twenty seven year, um, we anticipate that the athletic fields at Foreign and Law, they, as you know, they have artificial turf, and those, the, the artificial turf only has a certain lifespan. And so the, the turf at Foreign Law will be coming up for replacement in twenty six, twenty seven years, so.
We just did that.
It seems like we just did it, but it was, it was two thousand thirteen, fourteen when we did them, so. You get anywhere from eight to twelve years. We maintain ours very well, so we hope to get twelve years out of them, but, um, they're on the capital improvement plan because we anticipate the need in the next five years. And just the last one, um, our ongoing, um, our, our ongoing, um, efforts in the district to remove all asbestos, um, in the district. There, we, we rarely have, uh, a small, well, we've done a large percentage of our buildings, so we only have a small amount that's left. And, and just, just so that, you know, I, I, it bears repeating, there's no health hazard while the, um, asbestos is encapsulated. So, um, but it does, we, we do have an ongoing, uh, program of removing all asbestos in the schools, and that's on the capital improvement plan to continue that. So that's a, that's kind of the overview. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, um, it, just to clarify, in the twenty two, twenty three year for the tech ed facility and equipment improvements was originally listed as middle and high school. So I might understand that the first two phases will only be high school.
Yes.
And then phase three will be middle school.
Yes.
So no middle school this year.
Correct.
Ms. Petrowski.
For the Eagle Hill complex, um, do, do we have an estimate of what our current trailer cost that will be going away? Will be, so we have some sort of.
We.
Borrow why on that?
I will get you that number.
Okay.
It's, it's because we have less trailers now, but we still have that monthly cost, so. Yeah, I will, I will get you that number and have it in the Friday update.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? I do see great value with the, um, the childcare, uh, upgrades at Law. That, that's an area where there's a dire need in that, in that workforce for that, so I think it's, uh, it would be money well spent to have them, allow those students to have the same experience at Foreign, because the Foreign program is great.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
You see none. Do you have a motion, Ms. Petrowski?
I'd like to make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight capital improvement plan as recommended by the administration and forward the plan to the mayor for consideration and funding.
A second.
And by Mr. Fowler. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the next item is the, um, proposed budget transfers. And, um, we come to you in June and then again in July, um, to make the transfers that we, um, that we will need. We know that we need them in June, and then we come to you in July to, um, do the final transfers and clean up the books for the year so that we end with a, with a balanced budget. And, um, so listed on the transfer are, on the first page, are those items where we've intentionally in some cases and in other cases, um, uh, have, have seen savings, uh, where we've been able to, um, take those monies to put them into where they need to be transferred to. And, and I, I talk to you each time at, when I, when we do the quarterly report about when we anticipate, uh, deficits in certain accounts. We take action to make sure that other areas were able to cover those deficits so that we have a balanced budget at the end. So I'll just go through, um, quickly. The, the, the explanations are on the transfer itself, um, but I'll just go through quickly and, and then of course, answer any questions that we have. So, um, severances and retirements, um, at, to date, it says eight, but we did get an additional one. So we now have nine, uh, teacher retirements, which is still far less than the average that we, um, anticipate and budget for each year. So we've been able to save approximately two hundred twenty thousand dollars, um, in that, uh, in that line item. Um, workers' compensation insurance, uh, this, uh, this past year, we shopped. Uh, we, we didn't go out for a formal RFP. We have a consultant that goes out into the market and takes our workers' comp, um, program that we have and our, the experience that we have and shops the, um, uh, the insurance. And we were able to this year save over a hundred thousand dollars by going to a new company. And, uh, we don't take that lightly. Uh, we did a lot of vetting of the new company. Um, but, um, we, we've been very happy and pleased so far, uh, with, with the company that we've gone to, and we've been able to save a hundred thousand dollars in doing so. Um, the reason, and, and that change was made after your, uh, budget was adopted last year. And so that's why, uh, there was savings in that account. Unemployment compensation, um, less claims, um, due to, um, very, very, um, with being at full employment. Um, not many people laid off at, none at all, actually, so, um, that was good. In Blue Cross and Blue Shield, uh, we have a, a small, it's over, it's a four million dollar budget in the Blue Cross, Blue Shield account. So we have a small surplus of seventy six thousand dollars. Um, that's just basically due to less requests for, um, for the supplemental reimbursement that retirees are entitled to. Uh, the deferred compensation plan, this, the, the district, the, the paras do not go into the city's pension plan, and they're not, uh, eligible for the teacher's retirement plan. So by contract, uh, we provide a four oh one, uh, a four oh one plan for the paras, and we match up to six percent of their contribution to that plan. Because we had less paras this year because of the para shortage, we had less people contributing to it, so we had to contribute less. Subteaching services, I've talked about this during the quarterly reports. Um, we've had a shortage of interns from the, that were available from the colleges, so we have savings there. Electricity and heat energy. I want to stop for a second, and, um, this is, this is really good news. Um, in last year's transfers, you saw a lot of money being transferred into electricity and natural gas. And, and that was due to, um, a lot of factors, a lot of different factors. Since then, we locked in at one of the lowest rates, um, that we're, we're in a, we're in an energy consortium with, um, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and they told us that the rate that we locked in at was just at the right time, and it's one of the lowest in the state, which is great. And, and thus you see some savings there. Um, and in, in the energy, uh, the, the heat energy for gas, that's due to our locked in price, but it's also due to we had a very mild winter this year, so we used less heat, so we've been able to reap that. However, I'm, I'm afraid I don't have great news for, um, budget years coming up. And that's, um, we, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Bradbury and myself, um, had a meeting with our energy consultants. And right now, um, mainly due to, um, the, the Ukraine war and the sharp shortage of natural gas in Europe, there's a shortage of national, natural gas worldwide. And so it's, it's boosting the price up to where we're paying right now. We're, we're paying, uh, less than half of what, uh, everybody else in the state is paying, and they don't see that market price going down for several years. So although we're locked in, we're faced with, eh, let me just back up for one second. That's natural gas, but the reason why it affects electricity just as much is because all of the, the vast majority of electric generation plants, uh, throughout the United States and where we get our electricity from is fired by natural gas. So electricity follows the way the natural gas, um, market goes. So we're faced with, we're locked in for two years. When we get to the, the end of the contract, which is December of twenty twenty four, we will have a major spike if we don't kind of balance it out with next year's budget. So next year's budget is going to go up. I can, I can guarantee that now because we, we've been told that. We could stay locked in and pay artificially low prices, but what that will cause is in the next budget year, you will have a huge spike that you just want to avoid. So we're, we're, what we're looking at now is going out, um, and shopping the market for a blended rate, and I know I'm getting very technical here, but we're, we're looking for a blended rate that will take us out three to five years to try and smooth the increase that you're going to see over two years. So you may see an increase next year and say, why, if we're locked in, why are we seeing this increase? It's really because we think it's in the best interest to smooth that increase over two years rather than have a major spike in the second year. So enough of that. I just wanted to give you a forecast. I'm sorry for the bad news, but Mr. Brennan has worked it out for us when it comes to the electric and, and natural gas. But, um, I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's good news this year, but there's not such good news on the horizon. Okay, and then, uh, back on to the transfer. As we reported to you at the quarterly report, uh, we did anticipate shortages, particularly in the special ed area. Uh, we did freeze, um, the six thousand accounts, this, actually, the seven thousand accounts and the eight thousand accounts. So, um, we, we did approximately ten percent. And, um, so that, that ten percent is, um, is, is spread out between the fourteen schools, uh, the nine curriculum areas, so, um, the, the instructional division. So there wasn't any major hit to any, um, you know, one school or one department. It was really, you know, we, we, and we leave it up to the discretion of the principals, the instructional supervisors, to Dr. Fedigan and her team to come up with where can we push things down the road a little bit? When can, where can we defer things? Where, is there some place that we can, um, you know, cut corners on? And we've been able to cobble about ten percent of those accounts, um, to be able to transfer it to where it needs to go. So that's where the monies are being transferred from. And then, uh, on the next page, as you can see, um, and as we've been reporting to you during our budget reports, um, it really is to cover the, um, shortfall in the special education, both tuition and, um, transportation accounts. And that's basically because of unanticipated needs, students, new students coming into the district with substantial needs. And, uh, as you can see, we have, um, about a one point one million dollar, one point two million dollar shortfall at this time that we need to cover. Um, and that's after, um, the excess costs when we came back from the state, which was about one point one million dollars. So, um, you know, considerable, um, unanticipated. You, you know, um, Mr. Brown and, you know, at budget time, we talked about the, um, the unpredictability of special education. And last year, we had excess funds in, in special education. This year, it's on the opposite side. So we need to cover that gap, and so that's where, um, that's where the funds will be transferred to. I'll shut up and answer any questions on that.
Questions from board members? There's a very thorough explanation, Mr. Rich Telly. No questions? Make a motion, Ms. Petrowski.
I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the administration's recommended twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three budget transfers as presented.
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Now we're going to move to, um, Ms. Kaparsna for age on the little.
Thank you. On my report, you have the listing of job postings, personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, and stipend appointments, and as Jim mentioned, we do have nine retirements in the teacher ranks. Um, but the good news is we've started our recruiting since the budget's been passed and approved, and we have eight new teachers. I was hoping to get nine for nine, but we have eight new teachers that have already committed to Milford as their choice. Um, that is the good news. The not so good news is we still, as of right now, have twenty three more teaching positions to fill. Um, and that is because due to the resignations, people moving on, moving out of town, out of, out of state, et cetera. So. That's all for me.
Questions for Ms. Kaparsna?
And one more thing I'll mention, sorry. Those eight positions, um, three of them are math. Those eight positions, three of them are math teachers, two of them are science teachers, so we we're we're getting started on some of our shortage areas and trying to grab people as early as possible. So, thank you.
Do you anticipate any real, any other major areas where you think you're going to have a hard time?
I'm trying to remain positive, but yeah, there are a couple.
Okay, all righty. Well, we know you'll do your best.
Yep, thank you.
All right, I see no questions. All right, and we'll move on to the cash disbursements with Mr. Richetelli.
Thank you. Yes, members of board, in your package are a listing of all of the disbursements for the district over the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the month of May, with the highlighted areas in in yellow that are COVID related, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
There's our leasing cost right there. The hotspots, how much longer will we be utilizing those? Do you anticipate until the funding runs out?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Petrowski. Hold on that one.
This this month will be the last one of the the high bill. We're going to cut it, I think, into a quarter of what it is right now.
Okay. We're still going to keep some.
We're going to keep some, yeah.
Because we we still have families in need, it's just. Right, so is that something that we can maintain as long as we want to, or are we we're using COVID funds to pay for them, right?
We are, I think we are.
Right, yeah, so is that something that we can continue to maintain, or when the funding is? Depends what the budget is. Any other questions? Okay, I see none, thank you.
Ms. Scott, I may have a moment of privilege, please?
Yes.
So on August twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-nine, this school district made a decision to hire a Spanish teacher and changed the trajectory of many young people's lives. Did you know that was your hire date, August twenty-sixth, ninety-nine?
I know.
You weren't a Fettigan then, were you?
I was not, and I also had blonde hair.
So who are you really? Dr. Fettigan has been here changing and impacting young people's lives for all of her career, and I think a an imprinted legacy has been left, mostly told by stories of young people. And I think that's what we as educators want. We want our legacy to be left with young people as they grow. So we, Milford Public Schools wishes you the best. Thank you for giving your heart and soul to our young people, and we can't hear to wait to hear about the great stories about you impacting more young people. So best wishes to you.
Thank you, Dr. Putaya.
That completes your report.
She wants to extend a moment of privilege.
I just want to thank Dr. Putaya for those kind remarks and for the support of, of course, Dr. Putaya and the Board of Education and all of my wonderful colleagues throughout Milford Public Schools. I'm delighted about the Early Childhood Program and expanding that at Law, because that's where I started my career as a student in nineteen eighty, forty-three years ago, in the Early Childhood Program. So I'm really grateful for that commitment. I will continue to be a Milford Public Schools parent, so I'll be looking forward to the continuous improvement of the district, and I will always remain a believer and supporter of the school system, because this is my home. So it's been a wonderful place for me to grow up and live alongside my former students, my own.
I was going to say, nineteen ninety-nine was your first teacher year, so I had you in your first first year.
Yeah, and I was there the the year before, and actually, I started in ninety-eight, because I came home from school early, I graduated early, so. But the official hire was ninety-nine. It's been a wonderful place for me to learn and grow, and I'm very grateful.
Thank you for your efforts. All right, we have consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves consent agenda items consideration of minutes, May eighth, twenty-twenty-three business meeting, May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three committee of the whole meeting.
Your second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any board comment tonight? Ms. Petrowski?
I just wanted to say I really liked the the recognition of all of our retirees and all of our wonderful staff who have made such great contributions, and I just, as as a member of the board, I just want to extend my personal thanks to all of you.
Thank you. Any other, Ms. Dorel?
I'm going to extend my thanks to everyone at the board, from Mr. Brown, Mr. Richetelli, Dr. Fettigan, and for your help and guidance and assistance and direction through the last year and through COVID, because this has been the team that's been in place. And I think that this year, as we come to graduation tomorrow for Law and all of these, and really seeing that and seeing the vibrancy on the school campuses is just amazing and welcoming, and it feels so good. And it's funny, because Mr. Phillips was my freshman English teacher, and I had him for cross-country, and then you must have started. I graduated from Harborside in nineteen ninety-eight.
So we were there at the same time?
Same time, I don't remember you. I remember you for other reasons.
Well, she was blonde.
Yes.
Charlie Phillips was my mother's English teacher.
So it it's such a nice, welcoming place, and we'll be missing you next year, and know that we can always have a friendly face to look forward to or call when we have questions. So thank you. And I'm going to give a very personal shout-out to the Jonathan Law championship softball team going to States for the first time since nineteen eighty, and my niece Charlotte for playing third base, so.
As a freshman.
As a freshman, yes. Look forward to the next few years.
Any other board comment this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
And there you go.
Mr. Fowler has seconded. Do we have any opposed to adjournment? So we are adjourned at eight fifty-three. Thank you, everyone.